So this is a Zoom meeting and the Planning Commission is conducting essential business by electronic means rather than being required to be physically present in the same location. And this was necessary to protect health, safety, and welfare of Tennesseans in light of COVID-19 and the outbreak. And due to an executive order from the governor allowing for public meetings to be held by electronic means. As far as public comments, we have had some ecomments and emails received. They're going to be made part of the official record. You'll hear the applicants or you'll hear the staff mention that as we get into the meeting. Public comments will not be taken during this, taken during this meeting. They were emailed out earlier today to the Planning Commission, the comments that we received. Just a heads up that items may be deferred to a future meeting. If for some reason the Planning Commission doesn't feel like they have enough information. If they need more answers to questions, or if they'd like to hear more from the public, they can defer applications. So that that is an option. So don't feel rushed into doing anything unless you have all your questions answered. We are videotaping this meeting. I understand that the live broadcast is not working very well tonight. But we will post the video of this meeting on the town's website. This meeting may take a little bit longer and be a little bit more awkward than normal as we get used to technology. So please make sure everyone has a chance to speak and please be patient when working with each other and letting everybody talk. The order of business, the chair is going to run the meeting per the published agenda. And we may even make some amendments as we get into it like we normally do. And we'll do that here soon. And the Planning Commission bylaws will be followed and we'll follow Robert's rules. The, as far as roll call votes go, we're going to make sure that all votes are taken by roll call. So just be prepared. Sherry is going to call your name when it comes time for a vote. And we're going to make very clear that we understand who's making the motion and who made the second for the record. So it's helpful to state your name, but Sherry may speak up and ask you to clarify who made the motion or the second if she didn't get it. As far as presentations go, someone wanted to say something? Okay, as far as presentations go, staff will make some presentations, some of the cases, presentations, the PowerPoint presentations like we normally do. And we will share our screen to do that. And we'll stop our sharing our screen when it's over with so that you can see unrestricted in gallery view. But the applicants may also want to make some presentations too. I know of at least one tonight. So that they're going to, they're going to share their screen and when they're done, they'll stop sharing their screen and we'll go back to gallery view. Just a reminder to mute yourself while you're not speaking. And that avoids any kind of distracting sounds or anything. And the chairman may remind you to mute or unmute as we get into it, or staff will. And for some reason I do have the ability to mute you, so don't take it personally. If we hear strange noises, I may click that button, but you'll have to click, click the button to unmute yourself if I do that. As far as town staff, there are town staff present from engineering and planning and legal. And we're available just as at your regular meeting. If you have questions, please, please ask. And that's, that's all I had to share. Chairman Cotton, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Jamie. After we call, call the meeting order, if you would, let's give me a gallery view. All right, we're going to call this meeting of the Carville Planning Commission Order. It is January 7th. It's a brand new year, 2021, and we have a new commissioner. I'd like to welcome. Everything new is, everything old is new again. Thank you, Sherry, for being with us. We're glad you're back with us. And I look forward to a good year with you. That's Sherry Kilmurray.
Thank you.
Now, folks, this is a little bit unusual because normally we, we call the pledge, everyone to stand and do the pledge of allegiance. At this point, we don't have a flag. So I think Jamie is going to point his camera at a flag and I'll ask you to join me in the pledge of allegiance. Maybe?
It's pointing there. Can y'all see it?
Okay, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic.
For which it stands.
One nation, under God.
Under God. Indivisible. Liberty, justice, for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners. Ms. Michael, please call a roll.
Cotton.
Here.
Rosansky.
Here.
Kilmurray.
Here.
Goddard.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Given.
Here.
Oh, he is? Oh, there he is. Gilbert.
Here.
Jordan.
Yeah.
Worley.
Here.
All right, normally we would approve our minutes from the December 3rd, 2020 meeting. But those minutes haven't been finalized yet. So we'll defer that and we'll take care of that when we approve our meeting, our minutes from tonight, I should say, at our February meeting. At this point, we need to, before we proceed, we need to elect officers for the year. We'll need a chairman, a vice chairman, and a secretary. And so I will open the floor for nominations for chairman.
Mr. Chairman, this is Jewel Jordan. I nominate Greg Cotton as chairman.
Second.
Seconded.
Second.
Who's second?
Jeremy.
Jeremy.
We have other nominations. A hearing none. I'll ask Ms. Michael to please call a roll.
Okay, the motion was by Jewel Jordan and seconded by Jeremy Given. Rosansky.
Yes.
Given.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Kilmurray.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Goddard.
Yes.
Worley.
Yes.
And Cotton.
Yes. Commissioners, our next word of business is to elect a vice chairman. Floor is now open for nominations.
I nominate, Ms. Jewel Jordan, I nominate Scott Rosansky as vice chairman.
Second.
We've had a motion made and seconded. Do I hear other nominations?
Me.
Jeremy.
Do I hear other nominations, Commissioners? A hearing none. Ms. Michael, please call a roll.
The motion was by Jewel Jordan, seconded by Jeremy Given. Rosansky.
Yes.
Given.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Kilmurray.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Goddard.
Yes.
Worley.
Yes.
And Cotton.
Yes. Before we move on, we must elect a secretary. The floor is now open for nominations for Secretary of the Planning Commission.
I nominate Jeremy Givens.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Do I hear other nominations? Hearing none, Commissioners, I'll ask Ms. Michael to please call a roll.
Who is the second?
Chad Gilbert.
Chad. Motion was made by Alderman Worley and seconded by Chad Gilbert. Given.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Rosansky.
Yes.
Kilmurray.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Goddard.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Worley.
Yes.
And Cotton.
Yes. All right, Commissioners. Let me ask Jamie, do we have any additions or deletions to the published agenda for tonight?
The only change is, I do want to point out that the ownership is different for item 6A than what we published in the paper. We published that the property owner was Ramsey Locke Jr. But actually Ricky and Kathy Banks, they own that property now. And so that, that is a difference in what we published. And I will point out that item 7D and 7E need to be deferred to your February meeting. One is the meadows at Clarice Ridge, the preliminary plat. The applicant was, requested that and after, after we had some issues processing their application due to some staffing issues. So we rarely have to do that, but we had to ask the applicant if they were willing to defer. Because of some issues we were having, been able to produce the reports due to COVID. And then also ordinance 2020 11, the tree ordinance, we also need that postponed to allow some more staff time to work on that. Those are the only changes.
Nathan, let me ask you a quick question. When we vote to approve the agenda as modified, can, can we go ahead and announce that those two items, 7D and 7E are being deferred? Or do we make separate motions for that?
No, I think you can do it as all a part of approval of the agenda. And when you announce it, I would announce the date to which they're being continued.
Very good. Commissioners, I need a motion to approve the agenda as modified. The published agenda with the two items being deferred and the, and correcting the name of the owners of the property. In item 6A, which is DD 20-098.
Motion to approve the agenda with the modifications of 6A to list property owners as Ricky and Kathy Banks. And defer items 7D and 7E to the February 4th meeting.
Second.
All right, Ms. Kilmurray, thank you. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion, Commissioners? Hearing none, Ms. Michael, please call a roll.
Motion was made by Vice Chairman Rosansky and seconded by Sherry Kilmurray. Given.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Rosansky.
Yes.
Kilmurray.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Goddard.
Yes.
Worley.
Yes.
And Cotton.
Yes. We have one item tonight, Commissioners, on the consent agenda. It's DD 20-098. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda with the one addition, which already been that Rick and Kathy Banks are the actual property owners?
So move with that addition?
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, sir. Motion made and seconded, Commissioners. Ms. Michael, please call a roll.
Motion was made by Chad Gilbert and seconded by Sherry Kilmurray. Rosansky.
Yes.
Given.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Kilmurray.
Yes.
Goddard.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Worley.
Yes.
And Cotton.
Yes. All right, Commissioners, let's get down into the meat of this thing. First item on our formal agenda tonight is DD 20-023. And I believe that Scott is going to make the staff presentation for us.
Thank you, Chairman Cotton. I'm going to go to share my screen right now.
While he's doing that, the last item was approved, so the applicants and owner, if y'all, y'all want to stick around, you can, but you don't have to. Your, your item 6A was approved.
That's correct.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Is everyone able to see the screen?
Yes.
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 All right, the purpose of this request is approval of a conditional use permit for a convenience store on 1.46 acres. You see the location on the right of your screen on the west side of Byhelia Road, south of State Route 385. The property owner is Chuck Hutton Leasing, represented by Steve Bowie with Core Monday Investments. The developer is Solomon Shaw, and the applicant is Dahlhoff Thomas Designs Studio, represented by Michelle Yi. This site is located in Area 1 of the Byhelia Commons PD, which was originally approved in 2010. And you see several areas at the bottom of your screen, and we'll get into those shortly. This allows uses per the shopping center commercial zoning district. The convenience stores are allowed if granted a conditional use permit. The Board of Mayor and Alderman can approve a conditional use permit for a C-store. Or they did approve one for a C-store on December 14th, 2020. And that is for the site at the northwest corner of Carville Road and Byhelia Road. That is one that you originally turned down, I believe, on a five to three vote. This site is the red site that you see on your screen. Now, Area 1 is the convenience edge. It consists of out parcels along Byhelia Road. Below, you see the non-binding conceptual layout. It does indicate fuel pumps west of the building, behind the building, which is 6,500 square feet. And that is compliance with the requirements of the pattern book. The plan also indicates a drive-through and outdoor dining down towards the south portion of the property. It also includes a 40-foot street scape along Byhelia Road required by the PD. There is a condition that would require customer entrance from the west side where the pumps are located. On the screen, you see two perspectives, one towards the south corner and the other towards the north corner along Byhelia Road. And it does show the drive-through and outdoor dining, parking, screening, foundation plantings. And then partially concealed by the building is the fuel canopy. If other uses beyond a convenience store with gasoline sales are located on this out parcel, additional parking may be required. And you can see at the bottom of your screen, there are 47 parking spaces indicated, 32 of which are individual spaces. And then there's one space at each of the 12 pumps. And then you count also a drive-through space. Conditions would prohibit expansion of the building. Or a car wash without amendment to the CUP. And no auto rental would be allowed. Outdoor dining, bakeries, dairy bar, deli, beverage stores, beauty and barber shops may generate the need for additional parking. There's conditions related to that. On the map, you see in blue existing C-stores, most of which are north of 385. There were three pending sites south of 385 along Byhelia Road. One of which the CUP was approved right at Carville Road. One might be withdrawn, we're not really sure yet, down at East Shelby Drive, and then this site up close to 385. Access into the site will be provided by at least two access points. This is an exhibit provided by the applicant, and we'll get into some changes that may be required shortly. The Byhelia access drive north of the building is a right-in, right-out, and that is due to the proximity to the highway. A drive connection will also extend south to tie in to a service drive at a median break in Byhelia Road. You see that as well. Now, a third access point tying the site to Carville Road in use within Area 2 will be required via a rear drive parallel to Byhelia Road. And that was determined through some traffic study. That'll be conditions 12 and 13 in your packet. And also to let you know, stormwater analysis will be required with, with the preliminary site plan. On the screen, you see the road network in the vicinity. One thing to point out here, there is a traffic signal proposed at Carville Road. It'd be funded and installed, I believe, by the MPO in the next two to three years. The traffic study was provided by the applicant and has been reviewed by Kim Lee Horn. And that third-party analysis, which you see on the bottom left of your screen, indicated the need for additional improvements. Including on the top left there, extending the medium in Byhelia Road to prevent illegal left turns, and that's 150 feet. Providing two exit lanes at the median break, one for a left turn, one for a right turn. And then creating a rear access drive tying the site to Carville Road. That was condition 12 that was added. And you could see that at the bottom of your screen with the, the red line connecting over to Byhelia or to Carville Road. One other thing to note on this exhibit is the CUP exam, site plan for that other convenience store that was already approved. The access drives to Byhelia Road and Carville Road shall provide adequate room for stacking and internal movements and turning. And what you see on your screen also showing some Xs. Those Xs on that frontage drive up close to the, the street. The traffic study indicated that we needed to remove those because they were too close. It may create a condition similar to what Galena Centro has. Where you have cars entering the shopping center from Houston Levy Road. You're quickly trying to turn into maybe Hollywood Feet or someplace like that. And that was creating a problem which may back up traffic out onto the major road. We're trying to avoid that in this situation. So condition 13 would require the cross-access drives and connections be at the rear of the lots to avoid that congestion. We went through the six-prong CUP test to determine whether, if there were adverse impacts and these conditions were added. As an alternate, the applicant did provide this exhibit, the same exhibit, just with the blue line drawn. It may be acceptable, but we need additional study at the preliminary site plan. It is at the rear of the lot. The Planning Commission will need to consider the following questions regarding the conditional use permit for the convenience store with gasoline sales. Is the use compatible with surrounding development? And will traffic impacts be adequately mitigated by the added recommendations by Kim Lee Horn, conditions 12 and 13? The next steps would be the BMA would consider the CUP, and then the preliminary site plan application would follow. Example motions provided on your screen, and the applicant is in agreement with the conditions of approval. That concludes the staff presentation.
Questions for staff, Commissioners?
Yeah, I have a question, Scott. You said in your presentation that the convenience store at the corner of Carville Road and Byhelia was approved. Is that correct?
That is correct. The, the Board of Mayor and Alderman just approved that. And I believe your review, it was a three to five decision not to recommend approval.
Scott, I've got a question. Between, what is, what's the distance between this location? And the location that you've just described as having been approved by the BMA?
I believe it's approximately 800 feet. The applicant may be able to tell.
Okay.
The exact. One other thing I wanted to, we did receive more email comments and I believe 18 ecomments, and they were all in favor, which was surprising.
Okay, I just wanted to get some idea in my mind about how, what the distance was. That's, I thank you, sir. Commissioners, other questions for staff?
Yes. Approximately, how, how the, the stoplights that you're proposing to put in the stop side, stoplight, excuse me. How far would that be from 385?
I believe it's somewhere around 1,500 feet. The applicant may have a better idea. There is a detention base in there that you see on the far left of the image. It separates that from the off-ramps. And the traffic signal, which I don't have a symbol there, but it's in the right corner of this image. That's where it'd be installed and probably be installed within the next two years.
That traffic signal's been in the works for, for many, many years, really since before this, this area was developed. With, with the initial plan development that cut Carville Road through in that location.
Other questions for staff, Commissioners?
Yeah, I've got one.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Rosansky.
Scott, at the existing approved gas state, our convenience store, there's a access at the northwest corner, or northeast corner of that, shown on their plan. Will that be maintained? Now that we've moved the common drive to the, we're moving the common drive to the west? It would not. That would likely go away unless, just to the adjacent lot. The main point, I believe, that Kim Lee Horn was trying to make was to make sure that, that there wasn't a connection to that median break up close. So it could be that there is one up front, but then it goes to the rear. At some point before it reaches that median break. So the condition would probably require the one be in the back. But if they decided they wanted one up front, they could probably do that to the next lot. But before it hits that median break, it would have to move back to the back again. If you follow me. Yes, thank you.
Other questions, Commissioners?
Yeah, I did go back to that stoplight question that came up. Now, if I understand, this is, is close to the corner of 385 and Byhelia Road?
That's correct.
Now, the stoplight there at 385 and Byhelia, this is not. How far, did, did you say that's, that's from the other stoplight?
Well, the north entrance would be somewhere around 500 feet from that stoplight. If you go all the way down the Carville Road, it's probably more like 1,500 feet. And that's where the next stoplight would be located.
Now, when they did the traffic study, if you're coming off 385 going south on Byhelia Road. And you're looking left for traffic, and you look right to take off, time you take off, you're going to be at another stoplight. Is that correct?
It's not, it's not very far away.
That look kind of dangerous to me. Because I do know if you're coming off 385 going south, you immediately look to the left and you take off. As soon as you take off and somebody's behind you, that's, that's kind of close. I'm thinking from, from 385 and a stoplight just a few feet down.
Mr. Chairman, this is Jamie. I wanted to remind you that we've, we have James Collins on the, on the call as well. And if any of y'all have questions, perhaps the chairman could let him speak. If this, if this isn't the right time, then perhaps.
No, no. I, I was going to suggest that I knew he was going to be on. I think it'd be a good idea to hear from him now. To address some of these questions, because I think these are the questions that are going to continue to come up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is, this is James. The, when you come off of 385 headed south there, the place where that right-in, right-out driveway is shown to that convenience store. Is about 500 feet from the intersection of 385. So it is really close to where that would be. But the traffic signal that's being talked about down in Carville Road is, is almost a half mile from 385 down to where Carville Road is. It's, it's a little over 2,000 feet down there. So that should be plenty of distance after people come off of 385 to be able to gather themselves and figure out what's going on before they get to where that next traffic signal is going to be. And that's a good bit more than the distance over on Highway 72 from, from 385 down to Shelby Drive. That's a much shorter distance over there than what we're talking about down the Carville Road.
Have questions for Mr. Collins, Commissioners? Thank you, James. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Other questions for staff, Commissioners?
Commissioner Cotton, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, there was a, some opposition to the Carville Road convenience store. I can't remember exactly what that, those comments were in our Planning Commission meeting, but. I, I don't remember who made some comments during that meeting, but I would like to rehash what those were.
Jamie?
Yes, sir.
Can you help us there?
Oh, I'm trying to remember their, remember the comments.
I think he's right.
Yeah, I think there were some, some negative comments about the, the use in the area. I seem to remember crime. Scott, can you remember? There was a concern about crime.
Crime, there was a couple of people that were concerned about visibility, if it would be visible from their, their location. Some of the traffic. Those are the main things, but crime was a big discussion point.
Right, I, I remember some of, some people were concerned about the fact that we're so close to 385. And I think right there in north of 385, they actually had a shooting or something. And so with the traffic here, they were concerned, traffic and bringing crime closer to the residential areas, if I'm not mistaken.
I believe you're correct.
I will.
Yeah, Jamie, go ahead.
I will interject that particularly when we get to the site plan stage, that crime has been, has been something we've talked about with, with gas stations, including the existing ones and doing retrofits. So I think if this is approved, we'll, we'll need to look at ways to discourage, like the smash and grab. And there, there are ways through architecture that they can, in site design, that they can discourage that from happening with bollards and, and careful, careful design of the storefront.
Does anybody have the concern of two gas stations so closely located together?
Yeah, I mean, I was going to mention that. I didn't know if it's appropriate to do it now or when we have the.
I think that, well, when we discuss, Commissioner, I think when we discuss, that's more than appropriate to bring it all up at that point in time. Other questions for staff, Commissioners? All right, hearing none, let's hear from, I think Ms. Yi is going to make a presentation for the applicant.
This is Bob Dahlhoff. I'm going to make the presentation.
All right.
Michelle's here also, and also here is, is, is also the applicant for the store himself. And I, and you may, and you should have in your packet, I believe, including your packet, a bio on, on the developer himself. He's been. He's been a resident of Carville for 20 years and operates two other convenience stores, Gerken Stores in Carville now currently. So, and I know that at the end of my presentation, he'd like to say a few words also, if you, if you would oblige him to that.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, well, number one, I, I know this is a little, little, little odd for us to be dealing with this this way on TV screen, but just as long as we can communicate, I think that's always the key to everything. So I just hope this doesn't last too long, but having to do this this way. I want to let you know that we actually had our pre-application meeting last February on this site, so you'll know. That is one of the reasons it was shown as a green dot when those other two sites came before you because we were already, had already had our pre-application meeting. After that meeting, we started working with the state and the town to relocate that right in, right out to the existing Carville Road opening, curb cuts that exist there now. And that took a while, but we were, we did achieve, we did achieve that location and did, but it did take some time. And in June, was before, we went, I was before you at that meeting, the same meeting that the other two convenience stores were up before you, I was there to amend the outline plan to relocate, locate that right in and also the detention basin and preservation of some trees on the site. I was, my case, my item was after the other two C-stores. So I sat there and listened to that and it was, there was a lot of opposition. A lot of people spoke against it. I think you also had a lot of write-in also, but there was a significant amount. And, and as, as you very well know, you, you turned both sites down. And, and in that, our site, the third site, the green dot that was at the top on that map that was presented to y'all, what, which was our application as we was working through the technical data that we had to do with regards ingress, egress with the state and the town. One of the, I know at that meeting, at that time, during that discussion of the other two sites, there was a comment made by one of the other planning commissioners or one planning commissioner, that if there was a choice, that much rather have it to the north. And at that time also, the, a few other commissioners nodded their head in agreement, but are acknowledging it at least. So that's, and then, and then of course you turned down the other two sites. Excuse me. Also during that, or after that, you might say, that presentation, we went back and, and I presented my case to you for the amendment to the PD for that right in, right out application and adjusting some property lines and detention. And of course, you did, you did approve that. At that point, we went back because we did have a, a solid site at that point. The site we had our pre-conference on was a little bit south because of the location of the current or existing proposed plan, right in, right out, about 50 feet down, which wasn't much. So we went back and prepared our plan for submittal at that, at that point, which took a little time and prepared the, we actually submitted on October 10th of last year. And at, at that time, our traffic study could not be reviewed by the town. So our client paid Kim Lee Horn to review it for us, or for the town, I should say, and had some, some positive recommendations to that. And I will say this, we have made those, we are incorporating those recommendations and we are, that was suggested to create a better traffic flow, extending the median, median out in Bahalia Road and it does stop before the queuing spaces start. I think the concern of Mr. Collins was that people would try to make illegal rights left in and out of there, possibly causing an accident or fatality or something. So this should, so definitely correct that. We felt like, I'll tell you, that this certainly solves that problem of in and out and getting people back to Carville Road. Back 12 years ago, when I did the master plan on this development, anyway, it's 12 years old, I will say this, not, not to say anything about detrimental about what was approved on the corner, but the insight that I had with regards to the corner of Carville Road and Bahalia Road was to be an enhancement development as you turn into Carville Road and go down, down, down that road heading into what I would call an elite neighborhood, a high-end neighborhood. So the, I guess really the person, maybe it's just a personal problem I have was that the approval of a, the station there, now when you turn the corner, as soon as you turn the corner, you see gas pumps on Carville Road. That was not my intent, but if the mayor and board sees fit, then so be it, I guess. But that was not the original intent. The original intent was hopefully, it was a bank or a restaurant or something like that, a softer use entrance into that corridor, that Carville Road corridor. And we even addressed that corridor in our land plan with landscaping and all and visual when you turn, what you would see, a lake, a fountain, et cetera. So we have, I'm saying that as we have made those changes, traffic changes to make this work. And, and I believe being, I, I don't want to speak for any commissioner, please, but being that it was kind of insinuated that if there had to be a site, this site may be more appropriate than the other site. I do know, I have watched, I've listened to the presentation on the corner where the mayor and board did approve it. I know that I was there that night when it was before y'all, and there was a tremendous amount of opposition, actually, people speaking, and I think you did have emails also. And as, 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 as I said a little earlier in the staff comment, there are a lot of emails and support for this site and with these improvements. I know that Mr. Mr. Bowie is also on, online here and can make any comments if you have any questions for him. But the, the Huttons are in support of this site. We just delayed because of technical issues and be perfectly honest with you, the others jumped out in front of us and got there and appealed your, your judgment on that site to the mayor and board and we couldn't get there quick enough and couldn't get to you quick enough. So I don't, I'm not sure, I guess your, the question that you had, the, the two sites, you know, I don't know, at this point, I'm not sure which one will succeed or which one will, I know this one proposed in front of you, if approved, will happen. The operator is here and he would like to say something about it. He, and as I said, he is a resident of the town, has been a resident for 20 years now and operating two other sites in your town. Would you go to the next slide, please? The site is, this, this shows the revisions that we have made, shows the median being extended as Mr. Collins insinuated that should happen, 100 feet, 150 feet past that right in, right out. Also in front of the station, there's also two electric charging stations. I don't know that any other facility in town has that right now at this point, but I think that is very important as, as certainly as the days come and things are changing, as we all know. And it's, it's, and security cameras will be around it and security is certainly a priority with him and it is at his other stores also, very much so. And he can elaborate on that, I'm sure. But it, to me, when I did the plan, originally, this is a site that I felt that a convenience should be a fuel station, given for two reasons. One is the 385 traffic back and forth. The others are people that are getting off of 385, heading south on Bahalia, going home, could come in here, pull in and get their fuel for the next day and go back home, keep heading south and go home. Other people would go in and go through the shopping center parking lot, which is that asphalt drive represents, that would have parking on it and back down to Carville Road. That was always the intent. The planning commission required connectivity between the parcels, ingress, egress connectivity. And that's why the one at the front is shown. We can always switch it to the back if, if, if the town so sees fit or it could stay in the front and then the last parcel swerve back to the back. There's different ways of handling that so that does not create the same issue that Galena has. And I, I agree with, with, with that problem. It is certainly a problem. I've run into, to trouble there a lot of times trying to maneuver it. So it is, it does, it is a much better site, bus function better. It takes the convenience center and that traffic out of that corner. I know that the corner lot will always, in and out, will always have more traffic on that corner than this one will. This will disperse traffic in different directions. Traffic study was done and James did review it. It was amended and we did address those concerns. And now we're before you to ask if you would consider this site. This is the architecture and as, as, as was shown, as Scott shown, you see the, barely see the pumps in the back, we kind of accentuate it so you could see that they are located in the back. And it is, it is very subdued development project and could be a very elegant place and serve the population, certainly to the south. It has no service at this point. And the developer would own and maintain the entire building and operate it. So at this point, if it's okay with y'all, I would like to let the developer speak on his own behalf with regards to it, as he has been working on this with us and the town for a year now, almost a year coming next month. And, and so here we are, I guess, asking for support and we'd love to hear comments and, and, and see where we go from here. But I would like to turn it over to him and let him at least give you his commitments and tell you how he operates and, and how successful he has turned around the other store, existing stores that he took over. And a little bit of history about himself even.
Let's hear from Mr. Shaw. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
First of all, I thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak to you. And secondly, I wish all of you and all of us a safe, happy new year in this pandemic history, time of history. I lived 20 years in Pakistan, 10 years in England, nine years in Canada and 21 years in, in Carville. And I'm very fortunate to be part, a community member of the Carville community. I, I live in Carville, my children go to Carville School and I do business in Carville. And I, I, I choose Carville, my primary source of business. I've been operating, I've taken over the Gerken's store hours eight years ago. And since then, if you ask any member in the Carville community, they will tell you how much I transformed a dying business into a, into, into a very successful business. I do go, I live at the St. Nellar Trails and I do go through the Bahalia Road four times a day, two times going out, two times going in. And I've been thinking about what would be the best place to, to put a station best underneath of the community in that road. I thought of the Shelby Drive, I thought of the Carville Road, but both of them create, cause concerns for the community, either to be too close to the school, too close to the community center, more importantly, too, too close to the senior housing that has been put there. So therefore I chose the northwest corner of the site because it does not provide any threat, any concerns to the members of the community. And that's why there is a huge support and no opposition. And, and also it is a site, you know, that provides, caters the needs of the Carville community as well as the highway community. And, sorry, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, sorry. Okay.
And lastly, the, the proposition of this site is based on my experience of the other two stores that I operate in Carville. Tens Life Stalks went up for 425% since it is in section 10 here. What it tells us that, that auto industry is changing and there is no need for new kind of operations. And there's not a single operation in the Carville market that addresses those needs. So I have chosen this site and together with the town of Carville, I'd to operate some similar charging station project, based on their recommendations. And, and that's the primary part of this project, in addition to the other things that are. As far as security is concerned, I have been operating the two stores in Carville. The South Coast gate sold its, its location at the Arlington Road and Poplar two years ago because they had a very tough time. Every month, there was a break-in at that location. And I've taken that store for the past few years and during the past two years, there has not been a single break-in, neither there nor at the Gerkins. And that's because I personally seek, operate this store, pay special attention to the customers' needs and more importantly, the security of the customers. And none of these stores have experienced any break-ins since I have taken over. I have also, my store has not sold even a cigarette to a minor, to, 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 a minor, cigarette appeared to a minor in the past eight years on my operations at the Gerkins. I appreciate your precious time and I would like your support in improving this project.
Mr. Shaw, we thank you very much. Commissioners, do I have questions for the applicant, for Mr. Mr. Delhoff?
I would just like to clarify about the, the parking changes or the, the traffic changes. Are all of those conditions 12 and 13 agreeable to you?
Yes.
So the.
Yeah, so we've been.
In blue, that's, that's not what you're proposing, you're fine with the modifications? I thought I saw.
The graphic that we just shared here is the most recent and they agree with all of James's comments.
Okay. So there wasn't a, a separate proposal with a, a different revision in blue that hadn't been reviewed by the town? I thought I saw that earlier.
Yeah, that was, that was an earlier version, but this is the most recent one and it, it does follow all the conditions.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Other questions?
In the past, has there been any pushback from that subdivision that's right there behind that church?
We, we haven't gotten any pushback.
Behind the church, when it first came through the planning commission, there was a lot of concern for the, the site down closer to that neighborhood, Shelby Drive location. There was still some concern about the northern site, but I think they were really, really concerned about the site down Shelby Drive. I have not heard any concern for this particular location from that subdivision.
I have other questions commissioners?
I had a question. This is Chad. I was just going to ask the applicant in terms of onsite security, if you would, have you considered, given the security concerns with the other parcels for C-stores around this area from residents in the area, have you considered any kind of onsite security? And can you speak to that?
Yes, we will be installing the security cameras or the recent technology. And we, if need be, we will provide security officers to monitor the area for the operation, for the time of operation that the stores opened.
But, but not 24 hours a day? You, you do that for?
I mean, that, that depends within the, on the, on the towns. What I understand is that doesn't, town doesn't want it to be open for 24 hours, but if it is, if they allow us to, if there is a need for 24 hours operation, we keep, yes, we do, we will. And.
I guess, praise, I was, I was, I guess I was referring to, would you, would you commit to 24 hours of security regardless of the hours of operation? Maybe I didn't clarify that.
Yes, we do because, you know, yes, we will do because it is for, for my, in addition to safety and security, it is also for my own security. And you know, security officers don't cost that much as much as a break-in cost.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions commissioners?
I've got a question for staff.
I've got a question for staff. Or maybe Mr. Collins. With this diagram that you're showing, where's the stoplight? Proposed at the north end of this?
Upper right corner of this image.
I thought they were indicating earlier that it was going to be closer to the 385, um, interchange.
No, it, it's about 2,000 feet away from the 385 interchange, which is right there where Scott's got the cursor.
Okay, but there, the concern of people coming off of the 385 interchange and getting, hitting that, um, light. I thought they were thinking it was more towards the north end near this, the new site that's being shown. So, okay, thank you.
Other questions, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Mr. Worley.
I know we're working on applicants, we read, can we switch to Mr. Collins? I'd like to ask him a question.
Sure you can.
James, you there?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, we're at the BMA level. Um, uh, let me clarify where I was at on, on the other side. I voted no at the planning commissioner level as well as the, um, BMA level. But I think the concern, what some of the BMA members asked a question is, and they brought you up at the time, if my memory is correct, and asked you if, which of the two sites was better for traffic, um, movement and have, I think, less chance of, of problems. And I think you said the south side because of being so close proximity to, to the off ramp there. Because really, if you only 500 feet, if they get off that ramp going pretty fast and then all of a sudden there's two or three cars backed up trying to get into the gas station, that could cause a problem. And I think that may, because I think the commissioner, uh, the, um, the aldermen were concerned about what site would be the, the most, um, accessible. Is that correct?
Right, right. And, and the site plan that, um, that we were looking at at that time for, for this site that we're talking about tonight uh, was, was different. Uh, in particular, they had an access point, um, to that right in, right out driveway coming out of the site that was closer to Bahalia Road. They've now moved that access point to the back of the property, which is going to help out significantly, um, from, from what they had shown before. So you're, you're right, as people come off of 385, you know, heading south of Bahalia Road, they're going to be, uh, you know, right on top of this right in, right out driveway pretty quickly as they come there. If, if they, um, have slowed down enough to where they can make that move, then they, they will go all the way to the back of the property essentially before they turn into that site, which is going to be much better. It's going to give more stack room, it's going to give more for people to slow down, to be able to make their turns to get into the site. And we should have less congestion out on Bahalia Road as a result of that. They, you know, they have also, um, agreed to move the access from up front, close to Bahalia Road, back to the back of the lot, all along the backside back there, which is, um, which also helps out quite a bit. And both of these sites have the potential to generate a significant amount of traffic depending on, uh, what goes in the store part of that. Um, you know, the, the gas stations are going to generate, the gas pumps can generate a certain amount, but the real wild card is what happens for the actual store piece of that. And, um, you know, we've looked at, at, at the one here on the north, uh, real, real closely, working with the, uh, the engineer that did the traffic study for, for this site and looked at kind of a worst case scenario of it. Um, and with the arrangement of the way the roads are proposed now, I think it's going to function much better than what they had originally proposed.
Other questions, commissioners? Thank you, James. Hearing no further questions, I'll call for a motion.
Motion to approve DD 20 dash 023 with the required conditions.
Do I hear a second, commissioners?
You're joining, I second.
All right, we got a motion made and seconded. Discussion, do I hear discussion, commissioners?
If I could speak?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, now, after hearing, um, more about the traffic study, I guess I'm now concerned about, since both of these sites will be wild cards, uh, the one to the south that will also have, uh, other stores in there that we don't know who will be in there? Is that right?
That's my understanding of it. Uh, Jamie, is that correct? Is our understanding correct?
That's correct.
It's supposed to be a single tenant, isn't it?
Uh, I think the one on the south does have, uh, mult- multi-tenant bays for, um, for like a restaurant, isn't that right, Scott?
Yeah, I believe it may be set up similar to the other one that you see on the north side of 385.
Actually, uh, this is
The one that's on the east, the one on the east side, when you go north and east there?
Yes.
I think if you'll look at the, if you'll look at the minutes of the BMA meeting, you'll find that it's a single tenant use.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Worley. Thank you.
So gas pumps, convenience store, single tenant.
That's correct.
So that can be somewhat predictable. So how does that factor in, um, Mr. Collins? To, you know, you looked at the traffic and what, you know, this, this northern, uh, you know, piece would generate, but taking into this, this other one into consideration, um, how messy could this be worst case scenario?
Well, uh, you know, what, what we, um, what we, we got the traffic engineer to do, who did the study for the northern piece, was to basically look at it in a worst case scenario. Um, so, you know, not knowing exactly how all those, that the other bays are going to be built out and what's going to be in them. It's kind of hard to, uh, know exactly what it's going to be. So we got him to assume some pretty aggressive, um, uses up there so we could see what would happen. And with the changes that they've made to the site plan, you know, I'm comfortable that it's going to work fine, uh, the way that they've got it proposed now.
I think my question is, did you take this southern development into consideration in your traffic study?
Uh, so the traffic study that they did for the northern one did not take into account the traffic on the southern side. And the, and, um, I don't think that the tra- that the study that was done for the southern site took into account the northern one either.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions, commissioners, or more discussion, I should say?
I don't, uh, Jamie or Scott? The northern site that we're talking, we're looking at, the parking availability will limit to some extent what they can put in those other two bays, correct?
That is correct. Now, there might be a little bit of space, if you look right where my cursor is, to add a few more spaces. But they will still be required to have that walkway out to, uh, Bahalia Road.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion?
Chairman Cotton, this is, uh, Tim Goddard. Uh, I just just to make a note, uh, I shared Jeremy's concern of having two convenience gas station stores so close to each other, uh, particularly when we do have another one on the north side of, uh, 385. So, um, that's my largest concern, along with the traffic backup going directly into this, this particular site that we're talking about. So, uh, I'll be voting no on this.
Chairman?
The discussion, commissioners?
Oh, go ahead, Alderman Worley.
Okay. Um, bas- basically, I, I voted no on the one on the south side and I'll be voting no on this one is, I mean, you want, we got the potential of having two convenience stores very close together. I'm not worried about competition, there'd probably be plenty of room for both. I'm concerned about crime on and off, getting on and off ramp, that to be accidents coming in and out. And this is, uh, I've heard from a lot of residents over the last probably six months, uh, that they didn't want any convenience stores south of the interstate because they didn't want the crime down there. They'd rather go north to Winchester and go back to Poplar or get elsewhere. But having this too close to the interstate, the potential about the crime. And, uh, I don't think this is what the areas was designed, uh, on the front end to have two gas stations this close together. Matter of fact, when we did the plan of this and back in 2000, there weren't any gas stations, but one, maybe one potential gas station south of the interstate. And, uh, this is not what was, was planned for this piece of property.
Other discussion or comments, commissioners?
Yeah, Commissioner Cotton, I, I agree with what Commissioner Worley just said, also agree with, uh, what Mr. Goddard said. And, you know, putting two gas stations this close together aesthetically and, you know, just traffic wise and logistically, I just don't think that that fits, uh, what we want south of Bahalia Road. So I, I will probably be voting no also.
Yeah, this is Commissioner Gilbert. Uh,
Sir.
I was just going to echo the comments that have been made and, you know, I, I appreciate the applicant's comments earlier and, and I would tend to agree that between the two sites, if we were considering which site was a, a better option, that the northern site probably was the better option. Uh, but given that the C store at the corner of, of Collierville Road and Bahalia has already been approved by the BMA, I, I don't think that there's a need for service for, for two C stores that close together. And so I, I can't support this either.
Further discussion?
Oh, I'd just like to make a comment that I think I'll be the odd bird out here that, um, having them in the same location will eliminate them being anywhere else. So you have a, uh, from a safety standpoint, there can be joint safety that can be done to keep this areas that way. You've got three access points to this site. So if they miss the first intersection, then go down, hit the middle one and turn right or left and get to a gas station. And, um, so I will be voting in favor of it.
All right. Michael, please call a roll.
Okay, the motion was made by Vice Chairman Rosansky and it was seconded by Jewel Jordan. Rosansky?
Yes.
Given?
No.
Jordan?
Oh.
Gilbert?
No.
Kell Murray?
No.
Johnson?
No.
Goddard?
No.
Worley?
No.
Cotton?
I'm the, I'm, I'm an odd man with, uh, I have my reservations, but I, I would vote yes. All right. All right, commissioners, our next matter is DD 20 dash 9092 and Scott's going to make that presentation also.
Thank you, Chairman Cotton. The purpose of this request is approval of the Bahalia Commons PD comprehensive sign policy. Again, you see the project's location on the right of your screen. Uh, this is the same property owner as the last and the same applicant. The BMA initially approved the Bahalia Commons PD back in 2010. There are four areas indicated on your screen. Area one, the convenience edge, we just talked about consists of out parcels. Area two, the market core allows for mixed use buildings. Area three, the village edge allows town homes is under development currently for the town of Bahalia Commons. And area four, the business edge consists primarily of office and senior living use. And that is where story, story point is nearing completion. The proposed comprehensive sign policy will regulate signage for the office and townhouse, townhouse uses or townhouse areas of the Bahalia Commons PD. The comprehensive sign policy is required prior to issuance of any building, uh, permanent signage within the PD except story point, which has already been approved. A comprehensive sign policy required for all PDs are intended to outline color, type, illumination, size and location of all signs. The PD development or the plan development amendment, or I'm sorry, the planned development provisions per the zoning ordinance require signage to be consistent in color, size, material, location and design throughout each plan development. The sign manual establishes a consistent design theme for this community. And only the BMA through a plan development or the board of zoning appeals through a variance may waive the zoning ordinance provision. Only minor changes are requested to the outline plan and those are request one and two in your packet. Request one would replace language in the second sentence. Request two would be to add sheet number 10 for the certificates and signatures. Staff reviews or considers these as minor in nature and acceptable and no conflict with the ordinance. No concerns were raised at the neighborhood meeting and we have not heard any, uh, comments related to this application. If adopted as proposed, the comprehensive sign policy would allow several exceptions to the sign ordinance and design guidelines. And those are requests 336 in your packet. And I'll touch on them and I'll go into each of these individually. Page eight, which, uh, would be on the bottom left image indicates graphics would be allowed on the slope portion of an awning if the awning does not face a public right of way. On page 20, residential ground signs would be allowed a maximum height of eight feet instead of six feet interior to the development and would not require, uh, evergreen landscaping. Multi-tenant project signs on page 19, which you see as the, the middle image there in white, would be allowed to increase the maximum sign panel width from 10 feet to 13 feet. And finally, on the right, pedestrian directory signs on page 25 would be considered convenience signs in our regulations and would be allowed the maximum height of eight feet instead of six feet. Now maximum sign area of 21 square feet instead of 4.5 square feet per side. Our staff has provided analysis in your packet and I'll get into some of those, uh, discussion points. For request number three, uh, page eight, the awning request is to allow it on the slope portion of the awning. Now, one thing that they're giving back in return for the ability to do this is that this would count towards the maximum aggregate signage area per the sign ordinance. I don't believe that was done in Carriage Crossing and an example has been provided there. The Great American Cookies and Pretzel Maker, uh, it seems like a lot of signage, it probably does not have the cap that they're proposing here as a trade off. Uh, on the right of your screen, you see some appropriate signs from the guidelines and inappropriate. Some of that's be, because of the lighting up under the, um, the in materials as well. The language from the ordinance is in the bottom right of your screen. So the PC will need to decide if the location of the signage on and on is appropriate and if the, uh, trade off for the, um, the sign area is, is, is agreeable. Question number four on page 20, which you see on the bottom left. These are ground monument signs for residential areas. The request is to allow the maximum height to be eight feet. Six feet required as well as a request to allow signs interior to the development not to be landscaped. Now, the, the proposal that they're, they're showing here is more of a decorative monument style sign with a hanging, uh, sign panel. It is a lot different from what we typically see in subdivisions, which are more of these massive entry features with large signage areas and those signs are actually allowed to be 32 square feet, uh, per side. And you see an example there, uh, on the right. And what they're proposing in return for the additional height is to only do a four foot by four foot panel of 16 square feet. So it would be only half the size of what would be required in return for the height. I'll need you to weigh in on that. Request number five, this is on page 19 on the bottom left of your screen, ground mounted signs. Uh, this is the multi-tenant project signs, big massive signs that you'll see at, uh, centers like Carriage Crossing Marketplace that you see on the bottom left. Uh, and they, they need this sign to be 13 feet and a lot of that is because of the design of the sign. There is a lot of brickwork, uh, the tenant panels don't extend all the way to the edge of this sign. And so in order to have some, some more decorative features, uh, they're asking for this extra width. Request number six on page 25, these are pedestrian directory signs. And the request is to allow this to be eight feet in height instead of six feet and a maximum area of 21 square feet rather than the four foot, 4.5 square foot per side. And one thing, um, to mention here, our, our sign ordinance doesn't specifically talk about pedestrian, uh, pedestrian directories as a unique sign type. Uh, these are more typical shopping malls and town centers. And I did provide an example from Carriage Crossing. They do have a sign that is very similar to the one that is being proposed. It is taller than six feet, that is much larger than 4.5 square feet per side. It may even be larger than 21 square feet, uh, just to give you a comparison. So this being a unique, uh, type of sign, you may want to consider that in your recommendation as well. Now, in reviewing the revised plan submitted on December 10th, Now, in reviewing the revised plan submitted on December 10th, staff noticed some significant changes to the layout of area two, Market Core, and you did see a little bit of this exhibit in the last presentation from the applicant. The major change here from the original submittal on November 2nd is the spine where you see that arrow pointing. The Central Drive from Bahalia Road no longer indicates buildings pools to the street, creating a walkable neighborhood. And that switch from traditional form to conventional form may conflict with some of the language in the PD itself, which promotes a pedestrian-friendly traditional form. So there is a condition in the application that the sign policy does not include proposed changes to the layout, and the applicant has agreed to that condition, and they can speak to that. Changes to the layout for area two would require an amendment to the PD and a complete review by staff. Tonight, the PC will need to decide if the new sign policy is appropriate, first with the graphics on the awning, on the slope portion, and then the dimensional parameters such as sign area, width, the height, meet the sign ordinance regulations, and also should landscaping be required around the base of signs when located in the interior of the development. And I'll go through the deviations at the bottom right before we complete this. The next steps would be PC and DRC recommend approval. The BMA will make a decision on the appropriateness of this PD amendment, and that would probably be after some of their conditions are cleaned up, and then followed by any applications would come after that. Now, the example motion is provided on your screen. The deviations they requested are condition 7A, that's related to allowing that awning signage, and then conditions 13A and C, which is related to the eight-foot height in return for a little smaller sign panel, as well as the landscaping around the base, and then condition 12A, which is the width. And then condition 15B, which relates to the eight-foot height and the 21 square feet. That concludes the staff presentation. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Questions for staff, Commissioners? Do we have any questions for Scott? All right, if not, then let's hear from the applicant.
Okay. This is Bob Dahlhoff again. Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Yes. All right. All right, thank you. We, I will say this, some of these items were taken from Carriage Crossing that we did, and but also some of the images, for instance, on the deviation 7A, were from other areas around communities that we felt was actually very elegant signage, besides having an awning and then a sign on top of the building too. So it just, to us, it felt more, number one, more pedestrian and a lot warmer feeling, and it was just a more decorative but not flamboyant. We just felt like it was a better presentation as a for a front door. And as far as the second one, condition 13AC, that is actually the sign that the cruise development provided to us to use as their sign, and as Scott said, it, reality is, it's really smaller than most entrance signs are. And then the condition 12A, again, Scott did a very good definition of the reasoning for this was, and as he showed the comparison of those two signs previously, it just looked, the other one, at Carriage Crossing, just didn't look good at all. In my opinion, this much more architecturally, and as far as condition 15B, that sign, if you look at the one of the comparison that he had, lettering is down around the middle of your shin bone for direction. So it was really too low, as you can see there, to try to read even when you're actually looking at the part that's up there where the green is. So it needed to be raised up some, for sure, in our opinion, certainly if you walk up to it in reality. So that was the reason for that, and as far as, we're not asking, as Scott said, we're not asking for amendment to the site plan at this point. The reason the amendment was made, if you look at that site plan, look at the out parcels on the Convenience Edge, on the left, there's only two, and on the right, there's three. The median location in Bahalia Road dictated now where our entrance had to be, which kind of messed up the theme that we had. We still, the bottom one, just squeezed down, and it kind of left us out of that little loop area, so we brought the buildings up front to provide enough parking. So it's still, the parking is, you might say, is head, it's still a walking center, and not to say that this is the final design by any means, we don't know, we don't even, at this point in the retail market, we don't know who the users are. The retail market has changed so much that I don't think anybody has a grasp on what's going to happen next. But we do know that we want this to be a very classy-looking place and very inviting and friendly environment to be within, and that's our goal. And it's still going to be tweaking as we go through, and there may be some other kind of sign tweaking as details come through for specific users, but we wanted to set up some type, at least some kind of standard that creates an environment that we felt that was enticing to people to want to spend time in.
Chairman Cotton, you're muted. Chairman Cotton, can you unmute yourself?
Hey Greg, what you bond on muting yourself?
He said he's trying.
He's trying, okay.
The bottom left-hand corner.
Hit the spacebar. Oh, the spacebar down.
Oh, there we go.
There you go.
There we go. Commissioners, you got any questions for Mr. Dahlhoff about these signs?
I've got a quick, I've got a question. Mr. Dahlhoff, quick question for you. I think you've got residential going, which I'm probably comfortable with the residential part, and I may be comfortable, I think, with the awnings, you know, awnings done in the right way, you know, look pretty good, so I probably don't have a problem with either one of those. What I have, and the directory, I could go with or without. I have a problem, I guess, with the, on a condition 12A, the multi-tenant project sign. I think I'd rather wait, you know, we've approved so many things on this project way in advance over the last 20 years, and everything has changed. I would say, let's wait on that till you get, start getting some tenants, and then let's make a decision. But we've approved so many things and changed so many things on this project, it's nothing even close to what we started with, but I probably don't have a problem with awnings, I probably don't have a problem with the residential signage there, and I may not have a problem with the directory, but that other is a pretty massive sign from, we don't know what in the world, and you have no tenants at this point. Is there any way we can hold off on some of this to a later point?
Well, it would certainly suit us, because you're right, we don't know who the tenants are, and like I said, in this current residential market, nobody knows at this point, and but as the reason it was presented is because we were, all of a sudden, we've been required to present this to you. So if you would like, it's, obviously, it's up to you if you'd like to hold off on that until we know, until this thing, until we have the, something for the development, for the main part of the center, then the core, then I would, I would say that we don't have a problem with that, if the town doesn't have a problem with that by any means.
Other questions, Commissioners?
I have a question, Commissioner Cotton. I hear that no landscaping around the residential signage, if I heard that correctly, and I don't know why we would not require landscaping around the residential signage. I mean, typically what you see here is, if you've got a landscaping crew, they're going to come in there, get a weed eater around that thing, you're going to have a bald spot around the base of it. It seems to me that resident, that the landscaping will break up the signage, you can do it tastefully, and I think it'll add to the overall appeal of the residential side of the neighborhood.
Hey, let me talk. Excuse me, if y'all can hear me. We don't have a problem, that was just a sign that provided to us from the cruise development, and that was how it was incorporated, how they wanted it. I guess I'm going to have to agree with you. To me, it needs something at the base to soften that base, so I...
And to clarify that, it would only be applicable to the residential signs that were interior to the development, so any of those signs that are on Collierville Road will still require landscaping.
Landscaping, yes.
Other questions for the applicant Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman? I just wanted to clarify that I understand that on the public road, you would have landscaping. I would request that the landscaping be put to the interior of the development also.
That's okay with us.
Yeah, I mean, that's your recommendation.
Other questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Based on what we've got here, I don't see how we can vote on this, because there's too many changes been made, and I think it's something staff gets with them, but I think really the awnings are way too premature, the directory is way too premature, the big signage for the, I forgot what he called it, the core, core, I believe he said, is premature. The only thing that's involved is the residential. I had to agree with Mr. Given's there, is about putting some landscaping around that, you know, it looks kind of naked, I think we need to dress it up. So I think we need to come back, make a decision this, and just address the residential part, what they've got going on. The rest of it is still way too premature.
All right. Do I hear, Mr. Dahlhoff, thank you, sir. Do I hear any, do I hear a motion made, Commissioners?
I'd like to make a motion that the applicant, what he's had to want to do is defer it, otherwise I'll, you know, vote it now.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just a point of clarification, that y'all do have the ability to defer this above the applicant's, without their consent.
Yes.
You don't need their consent to defer it.
We would need to defer.
I think we have to defer, if we, if that motion is made, we have to defer to a time certain, is that not correct?
Yes.
Commissioners?
I'll make a motion to defer till the February Planning Commission meeting.
All right, motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion, Commissioners? Hearing none, Ms. Michael, please call a roll.
I couldn't hear who seconded.
I thought Commissioner Given seconded.
Well, I heard two people at one time, so. Was it Jeremy?
Who wants the credit for seconding?
Mr. Given's.
All right. The motion was made by Alderman Worley and seconded by Jeremy Given. Rosansky?
Yes.
Given?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Kil Murray?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Goddard?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Cotton?
Yes. All right.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a, or ask a question?
You certainly can.
I think I heard that, or I wanted to ask about the purpose of the deferral, and did I hear this right, that the purpose is to have fewer conditions of approval in the resolution and for the applicant to ask for less modifications from town standards? Is that, is that what I heard?
I think that's part of it. I think that the major concern at this point was the fact there are no tenants, and so to vote on a multi-tenant sign right now is a waste of time, because we don't have any idea who, what, when, or where.
Gotcha.
And I believe Commissioner Worley wanted to make sure that that was revisited at a time when there were tenants, something to really talk about. I think the rest of it is just changing the, you know, and I think, I think he made the same comment about the awnings also, if I remember correctly, because we don't have, there's no one there to consider what type of business it is, that type of thing. I think that there were, my understanding was, there was not any problem with the residential signage with the condition that there was landscaping around the base. At least, that's my understanding.
That's correct. Thank you.
Chairman, can I say something?
You can.
But I, I mean, I just want to ask a question. Jamie, to Jamie, please. Jamie, my understanding is, and help me clear this up, that there can be no final building permits in this development at all without a sign policy being approved, is that correct? Is that what this is all about, why we rushed this up?
That is correct.
Sign permits, yeah.
Okay.
It is, it is sign permits.
So I guess, I guess I'm getting back to, let's just say that the corner C store, their signage, do we, what do we do, do we need to address that, or are they going to address that? How do we do this?
Mr. Chairman, I think that the plan development says that there has to be a master sign plan before permits are issued, sign permits are issued.
Yeah.
It doesn't say that waivers or standards have to be requested. It's really, I've seen them very, very simple, saying, we're going to follow all town standards, and this is what our signs are going to look like, to lots of modifications like Carriage Crossing, and you've picked something kind of in the middle here. So I think it, you could just ask for less waivers and standards and just tell us what the signs are going to look like, and you'd probably be able to get one through pretty quickly. But I think that this requirement still stands until the BMA makes that go away as far as the requirement for a sign policy.
Okay. Well, Will?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, Commissioners, our next item is DD 19-036, and I believe that Don's going to make that presentation.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you see my screen?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. I might. Trying to get it going, but it may just look like this, sorry.
It's okay, we just need to find a six-year-old to come in here, and they'd run this whole thing better than any of us.
Resolution 2019-01 was amended by the BMA in 2019, which included the following changes, a change in development phasing, reduction in the number of lots, a new retention pond, a change in the stream location, and a change in the pattern book. This item was presented at the December 2020 Planning Commission meeting, but was deferred pending drainage impact study. The DRC has approved common open space landscaping and fencing on the December 10th, 2020 DRC meeting. The preliminary plan is consistent with the amended outline plan. You have your bulk regulations on the screen. There are three lot types. Lot type A will be developed during phase one, while lot types B and C will be developed in phase two. However, both phases will be developed concurrently. In regards to the common open space and usable open space, there are 10.65 acres of common open space, 6.5 acres of usable open space, natural areas, trails, sidewalks, private streets and alleys, and landscaping. The network of common open space throughout phases one and two that ties together the existing stream and proposed detention area. And as I said before, the DRC has approved the common open space landscaping and fencing and other amenities. The applicant is requesting an alternative right-of-way. Highlighted in blue, you can see the private alleys, which equates to 22 feet wide and 24 feet wide, and there are four alleys, private alleys. and twenty-four feet wide, and there are four alleys, private alleys, and there are two private streets, which are thirty-one feet wide. Fleming Road will be widened to sixty-eight feet, and there's only one connection to phase one and two via Fleming Road. The traffic study states that there's low impact, there's a low impact on traffic. The applicant is requesting an alternative tree mitigation. The alternative tree mitigation ratio will require the planting of fourteen new trees per acre for the twenty point fifty-five acre sites. Mitigation trees must be planted in addition to other landscaping already required, including street trees and trees required to be planted in each front yard. The landscape plan incorporates enough trees to meet the tree mitigation requirement, and approximately two hundred and fifty trees will be removed during the development of this property. For the drainage report, the drainage report states that the detention pond system will reduce site discharge to pre-development condition and no negative impacts are anticipated. And in regards to the hydrology report, which was the reason that this item was deferred, it had to get further studied, there are no, no negative off-site impacts are anticipated. It was noted that water tops Fleming Road during extreme rain events. And since the two thousand twenty planning commission meeting, the hydrology, hydrology report provided by a developer's consultant was, was reviewed by a third consultant, a third-party consultant, and indicates this as well. However, the hydrology report indicates that the post-development runoff is equal to or slightly less than the pre-development runoff levels. This indicates that the detention is adequate for, for the sites. And the next steps include a development agreement and infrastructure construction, final subdivision plan. They also have to get the outline plan recorded, which they're in the process of getting, and a building permit for, to build lots. The applicant is okay with all seventeen conditions, and the example motion reads to approve the preliminary subdivision plan for Lennox Garden subdivision phases one and two for forty-six residential lots, subject to the following seventeen conditions of approval. And that concludes my presentation. Any questions?
Questions, commissioners, for Don. Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Let's hear from the applicant then.
This is Joe Mills with the, on behalf of the applicant. And we have no presentation, we're just happy to answer any questions.
All right, Mr. Mills, questions for the applicant commissioners?
Hi, this is Commissioner King Johnson. So the, if, if correctly, if I'm wrong, we were looking at, it was going to be a negative impact on those that were on the south side. Am I correct? As far as flooding was concerned or, or on that, is, am I correct on that?
What our hydraulic study indicated is that we would not, because of the retention ponds that we've implemented into this proposal, we would not be having any negative impacts on anyone on either direction.
Other questions, commissioners? Thank you, sir. Commissioners, having heard no other questions, I'll call for a motion.
Chairman, this is Jewel Jordan. I move to approve the preliminary subdivision plan for the Lennox Garden subdivision, phases one and two for forty-six residential lots, subject to the conditions in Exhibit one.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded. Do I hear any discussion, commissioners? I call for a roll call, please. Ms. Michael, call a roll.
Motion was made by Commissioner Jordan and seconded by Vice Chairman Rosansky. Jordan?
Yes.
Given?
Yes.
Rosansky?
Yes.
Kil Murray?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Goddard?
Yes.
Worley? Worley?
Ah, has Commissioner Worley left us?
He's on mute.
Oh.
Can you thumbs up or thumbs down?
Yes, I couldn't find my unmute button, okay.
Worley, yes, and Cotton?
Yes. Very good, commissioners. We have completed our business, and we've actually survived this Zoom session. Do we have any other business to come before us? Mr. Grove?
I was going to mention a couple of things. We, for those that have been planning commissions for a while, and all of you have, the state has a, an ethics form that, that they require you to fill out by the end of January every year, and so it's about that time. And if you need help filling that out, Sherry Michael can help you fill that out, just so, just get with her, and she can show, show you where on the state's website to fill it out, and she can help you with those questions. But just a, a reminder that that form has to be filled out by the end of this month.
We're all ethical here.
Oh, yeah. No question. But the state just wants to know. Yeah.
Welcome Commissioner Kil Murray back, everybody. I'm glad to have us all back together again in this virtual way. That being said, meeting adjourned. Unless Jamie's got something else.
I was going to say two more things. Save the date for January twenty-first. We won't have a Board of Zoning Appeals that night. And at five-thirty, we're going to do a training session for our board and commissions on Zoom or Teams. Could be Zoom, but we also use Microsoft Teams, and we might use that as well. But we're also going to record it for those of you that can't make it. And so we're, we're hoping to have some, some, some tips on running public meetings and roles in the development process. So that, that'll be Janu, or January twenty-first at five-thirty, and I'll send out more information about that. And the second thing I was going to mention is a, a planning commission work session has been called for also Janu, January twenty-first at two o'clock via Zoom, and that's to discuss the Ashby Plan Development. And that's a, a new plan development that's on Maynard Way, on, on north and south side of Maynard Way. It's very large plan development that the, the Wingo family is proposing. It's got residential, commercial hotels, office space, assisted living, it's got, got a lot of things in it. And they thought it was so complex that they wanted to have a work session with you before they actually showed up on an agenda with a, a resolution. As you saw tonight, with a, with a PD that, that's asking for a lot of things, it's, it's really hard to digest that in, in one, one public meeting. And so that's January twenty-first at two PM, a work session. That's all I have.
All right, folks, we're adjourned.
Happy New Year.